Today is Monday, August 8th, 2022. The time is 7:16 and I call this meeting to order. Counselor Flores is going to be giving our invocation tonight and after the invocation, if everybody will please stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I think it's appropriate before we begin with invocation that we recognize El Paso County Sheriff Deputy Andrew Perry, who was killed in our sister city fountain. So please keep him and his family in your prayers as we follow through on this invocation. God is a generous giver and he loves to give. He will give his wisdom to anyone who humbly asks for it. It is his gift to us that we may do what is right and just and that we may live successful lives. Elected officials, if they ask for wisdom, will in turn govern our communities with enlightened hearts and minds and make sound and fair and right decisions to all the people in our region. Thank you, Lord, for all of our civil servants. Thank you for their hard work and sacrifices. May you continually bless them. May you generously give to each of them wise and discerning hearts to skillfully govern the people in our city. Give the mayor, the city leader, staff and city council the wisdom so that they may solve problems, distinguish between right and wrong, and bring order, stability and prosperity to our community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God.
Hey, roll call.
Larry Tencio.
Here.
Dennis Flores.
Here.
Heather Graham.
Here.
Regina Maestri.
Here.
Sarah Martinez.
Here.
Vicente Martinez Ortega.
Here.
Lori Winner.
Here.
Okay, and next up we have special recognitions. We have a proclamation presentation that Counselor Martinez is going to give to Pueblo LGBTQ Pride Day, August 21st, 2022. If we could have Tommy Farrell, the president of Southern Colorado Equality Alliance up.
Well, I'm here presenting the Pueblo LGBTQ Plus Pride Day proclamation to Tommy Farrell and Tom Carrigan. Whereas the city of Pueblo accepts and welcomes diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. The city of Pueblo acknowledges that lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender and queer communities contribute to the cultural, civic services of the city. And whereas we support the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination and recognize that all people, regardless of age, gender identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, physical or mental capabilities, or sexual orientation have the right to be treated with honor based on their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas we recognize the immeasurable contributions of the LGBTQ plus citizens, we renew our commitment to the struggle of equal rights for them to end prejudice and injustices wherever they exist and create an affirming culture for LGBTQ youth. And whereas we recognize those who came before us, the brave who marched, stood up to injustice and brought change through acts of compassion or defiance, who have made enormous progress and continue to strive for a more perfect society. And whereas 2022 marks the 30th anniversary of the Southern Colorado Equality Alliance founding response to Colorado's Amendment 2, we recognize SEA's continued work to bring LGBTQ plus in allied communities through education, advocacy and empowerment for support and inclusion and their annual LGBTQ Pride Festival. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of Pueblo, Colorado, with the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim August 21st, 2022, as Pueblo LGBTQ Pride Day in the city of Pueblo and celebrate and support our LGBTQ community, their contributions which enhance our city and their right to equality under the law. Very much congratulations and happy Pride in Pueblo. Would you like to say any words?
Thank you, Counselor Martinez and the rest of the counselors. We want to thank the city council not only for your support with this proclamation, but your sponsorship of our Pueblo Pride event as well as Pueblo Transit and Pueblo Parks and Rec who have been huge helps in making this event happen year after year. And we'd like to invite everyone to join us on August 21st in Mineral Palace Park for our loud and proud Pueblo Pride celebration, starting at 10:30 with the parade around Mineral Palace Park and then food, vendors, entertainment, resources throughout the day from 11 to 4. Thank you.
Okay, next up we have public forums. Starting us off will be Ruth Tarvella wanting to talk about approval for fallen golfer monument. If you just want to hit that button right in the front to turn your mic on.
There you go.
There you go.
Is it on?
Madam President, City Council members, Mayor Gradishar. My name is Ruth Tarvella, the widow of a fallen golfer, and this is my daughter, Shawnette Tarvella-Henson. The reason that we are here this evening is to present our committee's desire to have a life-size monument erected at Elmwood Golf Course to honor fallen golfers. So far, we have obtained the blessing of both Randy Breger, the Elmwood Golf Course pro, and the Parks and Rec Golf Advisory Board to go forward with this proposal. We have spoken to two local artists to get a ballpark figure of what a life-size bronze statue would cost. Both artists' estimates were pretty much the same. We spoke to Gary Campbell, the artist that was commissioned for the eight-foot statue called Vision that stands in front of Walking Stick Golf Course, and Rick Willetts, who created the life-size statue of Sarah Shaw outside of this building, as well as many of the pieces of artwork on the Riverwalk. Rick was able to attend the Parks and Rec meeting with us and answer questions that the Golf Advisory Board had. We hosted our first annual golf tournament for fallen golfers on Father's Day this past June. It was very successful. We raised about a quarter of the funds needed to have a monument built and to help with scholarships for students. It is our intention to get corporate sponsors to help with this project as well. We just need to know our next steps in getting approval and resolution passed to build a monument for fallen golfers on city property. On behalf of our committee, I would like to thank you for letting me share this information this evening. We believe this monument would be an asset to Pueblo and would appreciate a call regarding our next steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tarvella. Okay, next up we have Cora wanting to speak about public health and legacy of colonization.
This is my area. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I am here. I'm Cora. I'm a resident of District One and I also currently work in sexual health. So in Pueblo right now, some of the urgent health concerns that I am responding to include syphilis outbreak and I'm also standing by to find out what our response will be to monkeypox as numbers rise in the state with limited vaccines. As we look into the history of these diseases, we also see a history in public health of allowing very vulnerable people to die of many of these diseases. And this is a history that goes back to the 1400s. Specifically, when we talk about, especially during our sexual health classes at the treatment centers, when we talk about how people during HIV in areas that wanted to be gentrified were left behind without any sort of response. People often recognize that in the way that they have been left without resources in the wake of this pandemic. And as we see the cycle through of diseases like syphilis and pox viruses today, I would like to remind everyone that nobody after the year 1972 has been vaccinated against smallpox. We need to look at our history to understand the legacy of these diseases and to understand the cycle and how we need to stop it and how we celebrate the symbols of people who brought these diseases to our country. To demonstrate some of the numbers behind the incredibly destructive possibility of these diseases, I will be reading today from the book Lies My Teacher Told Me About Christopher Columbus. So we will begin, "Like the pilgrims, the Spanish were also aided by epidemics. When Cortez marched into Tenochtitlan in triumph, dead Aztecs were everywhere. A smallpox epidemic had laid load to defenders of the city. We could not walk without treading on the bodies and heads of dead Indians," wrote a historian with Cortez. "These plagues are the most important event in the entire history of the Americas because they allowed Europeans to settle, not just conquer. The epidemics continue to this very day among the natives in the Amazon Basin. In the 1980s, miners and loggers reached the Yenamamos of northern Brazil and southern Venezuela, bringing European diseases. A fourth of their total population died in just one year, 1989. In 2009, a swine flu epidemic killed more. A year later, malaria killed at least 50 more. Before 1992, most of our histories avoided telling us about these plagues too. Rather, they created a mythic past. They omitted how 25 million people in Mexico were reduced to fewer than 2 million a century later. They left out how perhaps 14 million natives in the United States were cut down to just 200,000. Instead, they told how our brave European ancestors conquered a virgin wilderness. Indeed, American inventors titled its chapter about the first British shuttlers in North America, 'Opening the Wilderness.' It's hard to believe that the neglect of this topic in textbooks published before 1992 resulted from ignorance. After all, J.W. Barber put it in his book in 1829. Moreover, primary sources told about the plagues from the start. John Winthrop, for example, governor of Massachusetts Bay Colony, called the plague miraculous. To a friend in England in 1634, he wrote, "But for the natives in these parts, God hath so pursued them as for 300 miles, faced the greatest part of them or swept away by the smallpox, which still continues among them. So as God hath thereby cleared our title to this place, those who remain in these parts, being in all not 50, have put themselves under our protection." Columbus's findings caused almost as much change in Europe as in the Americas. The first change was medical. Syphilis began to plague Spain and Italy shortly after the return of ships from Columbus's second voyage. The French, when they caught it, called syphilis the Spanish disease and the Germans called it the French disease and so on. Related diseases existed in Africa and perhaps Europe, but syphilis probably came from America. On the other hand, more than 200 drugs come from American plants whose pharmacological uses were first discovered by American Indians. In order to address this legacy of colonization and public health, we have a lot of work to do. This includes housing equity. This includes access to phones, one of the biggest pieces we see when we have a difficult time finding people for follow-up treatment for syphilis. But the other is not glorifying people who brought these diseases to America and who brought diseases from America to Europe. I can't imagine looking back at my Irish immigrant ancestors and being proud to be associated with somebody who is responsible for spreading disease around the world. But if our Italian-American brothers and sisters in Pueblo would like themselves to be associated with the legacy of syphilis that continues to plague us today, that is up to them. So overall, the least that we can do is not put resources into protecting these monuments and glorifying this history out of all the things that we need to do. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Cora. Next up we have Elvis Martinez wanting to talk about council core values and more.
Okay, I'll start off. I'll end with that, but I watched the mayor's town hall online because I was out of town on my birthday, but this is a joke, okay, people? So I heard that the mayor wants to make a friendly wager on if the Broncos will have a better record than the Raiders. So this is my proposal. And if you could adjust it to him too. I know what he's going to say, though. So here's my challenge. When the Raiders have a better record than the Broncos, the mayor shall wear a Raiders hat and Raiders jersey and record at least a 30-second video praising the Raiders and post it on Facebook and other social media if possible. If somehow the Broncos have a better record than the Raiders, then I believe President Graham should wear a Broncos jersey to city council meeting. Okay, with the core values, I'll get to that in a minute. But at the beginning of the work session, it was a bunch of malarkey because I heard several months ago that they want to get rid of the mayor. Well, it was said at a council meeting, if any elected officials had to be removed, it's either by a recall or if a judge deems that person insane or incompetent somehow. So that's how you get rid of an elected official. And just to correct some people that were speaking, the mayor's election is in 2024, not 2025. It was written in the charter for the first mayor, whoever he or she was going to be, was in there for five years and then it'll be every four years with the presidential election because that's when most voters come out. And if I'm wrong, I'll say I'm wrong, but you guys could go back and check. It's 2024. And if I may invoke Ms. Winner, she did say that some members on council may be thinking about running for the mayor, which I said that a few months ago, if you folks remember, which I also have a list down at home of who I think might run for mayor. And I have people written down on there that you guys may never heard of or may not or may have. But with the city council core values that some people might not know, just a couple of them to talk about. Accountability, ethical, transparency, responsive and respectful, which a couple of those have been not taken care of this year by some council members are just some of the core values of city council. Responsive and respectful is a major core value and all these can be found on the city website. When a citizen of Pueblo reaches out to any of you via email or text messages, they shouldn't be ignored just because you disagree with them. Also intimidation by a member of city council toward someone that they serve is uncalled for. Trying to force someone to speak at a work session, then saying, wow, the mayor took that person off of the work session. The mayor doesn't do that. I also think it should be looked into to see if any elective officials have a mailing address outside of Pueblo because that might be a violation. And then to end real quick, rest in peace to Ms. Olivia Newn-John. And just to say what Councilman Flores was saying, rest in peace to our Paso County Sheriff Deputy Andrew Perry. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up we have Andy Sanchez wanting to talk about the Arts Center coming home ceremony.
Thank you, President Graham. Honorable council members, I want to thank all city leadership for having me here tonight and being able to speak about it. This is a thank you coming up on behalf of the Arts Center and our board of trustees and also the community. This Friday, we have at the Arts Center our coming home celebration, which celebrates in a community way our 50th anniversary here in Pueblo. So I brought for you all some information in this regard and I want to personally invite you all that day, this Friday, August 12th, from 10:00 AM until 7:00 PM. What we have to start at the Arts Center is first of all, from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, our galleries will be open for free throughout the day for the entire public and region here in our area. Part of this is again, our thank you for our 50th anniversary back to the community and the region that we serve. The other side of this as well is to bring back the same entertainment that opened up the Arts Center 50 years ago in June of 1972. So that evening, starting at 2:00 PM, we're actually in the afternoon, starting at 2:00 PM up until 7:00 PM in the Bob Jackson Conference Center in the theater, we will have people from Ballet Folclotico here in Pueblo as well as the Tambouriettesons. I'm honored to be sitting next to the Pueblo Symphony as well. The Pueblo Symphony will cap off the evening that particular day from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. We also have our Native American delegation from here in Pueblo. 50 years ago, and Joanne Dodd's recently published her 50th anniversary book regarding the Arts Center. And in that book, she specified the folks that opened up that day 50 years ago. I want to say this, that part of the thank you and me coming here tonight is reminiscent of the work that the city and the county did 50 years ago to make sure that the Arts Center was opened. Back then with the city of Pueblo, Alan Blumquist, along with Johnny E. Hill, who was a county commissioner at that time, worked together very strongly in order to make sure that the Arts Center was opening in Pueblo. The other part of that, Kathy Farley and Pat Kelly, as well as other stakeholders in our community from all races, from all regions and all backgrounds, worked together with the SCED counties, the Southern Colorado Economic Development District, to ensure that the Arts Center was the umbrella arts organization for the Southern Colorado region. So again, on our behalf, I just want to say a very warm welcome and please do come out that day from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Galleries are open. I want to invite the community as well. And I've had a chance to talk with the group here somewhat in regard to inviting the folks that are here with us tonight. I'd also like to, if it's okay with you, have permission to approach the dais and if I could hand these to you all. Thank you so much. I just want to say that we do not take lightly at the Arts Center that we are a regional arts center. And coming up this fall, Councilman Atencio actually is going to be teaching ballet with us. And I just want to say that we are looking forward to, again, our first Friday Arts Academy begins this fall and then our adult classes begin in full into the spring. So we just want to remind the public, come and see us. The Da Vinci Exhibition that is up right now that the public can see for free this Friday, August 12th, with this coming home celebration, that was made possible through city council as well. So we want to just make sure to come in tonight again, tell you our heartfelt thanks and our thanks to the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Next up we have Nicholas Donaldson wanting to talk about Home of the Abandoned Heroes.
You know, there's probably a lot of names that it is, but I am going to call it the Home of Abandoned Heroes. You know, there is a lot of heroes here, but being a combat vet, multiple deployments, different foreign wars, I just call a spade for a spade. I'll read you something here so you can, I'll just brief it here. Private Nicholas A. Donaldson, 0311, 2007. Most of this stuff awards guys these dozens. I just keep them boxes. There's not, I don't celebrate most of this stuff just because it, long story short, the war we were told and showed wasn't worth it. And our politicians here continuing to abandon us from the president all the way to city council. And you guys do have availability to do stuff. You can say, we'll lobby for this, lobby for that, but you won't lobby for them. I came in last month saying, hey, veterans aren't getting health services and not getting care. They're not getting PCPs here. Actually, my PCP, I was still told I'm forced to go down to Aurora and Golden. Three-hour drive one way. It's amazing. I have a city official here, Ortega, that's new. You're my member. I came in expressing this and nothing. We have a health official here, detailing health official and community issues. Nothing. It's a joke. You can hold such a title. And I'll say that because I got better care, medical care, and I had to go overseas to actually get better treatment than I got better here in America. So it's nothing new. I'm used to getting spit on, called baby killer, murderer, church group saying, hey, it's a blessing that you D's killed your friend, yada, yada, yada. All the rhetoric. But here we go. Deployed in support of Task Force 23, the Hadith Triad, our Iraq operation Iraqi Freedom. As a valued member of Task Force 23, he answered a call to call a force of insurgency in the Hadith Triad. He deployed in the combat zone and participated in sustained operation against the Baathists, Al Qaeda and other associated terrorists. He endured personal hardships, participating in dozens of combat patrols, continually improving his position, received enemy fire and was subjected to constant threat of improvised explosive devices. He is now part of that special fraternity who knows the true value of freedom because they put their lives on the line to defend it. He has learned the true meaning of the term band of brothers because he has faced fear and uncertainty with his brothers in arms. He will never forget those brave men who will never return to their families or the wounded on the battlefield. By doing his part, he helped an entire country taste the freedom that we enjoyed every day. He truly is a great American. Shit, don't get that from you guys.
Donaldson, please.
No, don't interrupt me while I'm talking. You guys get your chance.
Your time is done.
No, it's not. So 2:24, if you want, the police chief can arrest me because I haven't done anything to violate this.
Sir.
So I'm going to continue. I got 2:17. So here's my medals, 15 years. Lori Winner saying, call cops if you're homeless asking for money.
Sir.
Here's my medals. 12 plus, the 15 years of waiting. By the way, I got paid six figures selling the house. You guys ain't going to see a damn dime. I'll be out of town here in two weeks and you can do, no. And by the way, last time I did this, they're going to destroy that. So here you go. Here's my, no, I'm not taking that. You're going to treat us like trash. I'll treat this place like trash.
Can you please cut?
So there's my medals and here's my awards, but you can.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Okay, next up we have Ms. Rebecca Robles.
Is this on? Okay. Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Rebecca Robles. I live in Bessemer and in Nawat, which is the indigenous language of the Aztec Michigah, which is what I am. We would say Qualitunali, which just means hello. So Qualitunali, I'm Rebecca. I wanted to come speak today about SB 22150, which just passed a couple of months ago for the state of Colorado, which established the office to investigate cases of missing and murdered indigenous women. And I think that that's relevant today because like Cora was talking about earlier, you know, we, missing and murdered indigenous women, that is part of the legacy that the colonizers, the conquistadors and the church, the missionaries actually left along with, you know, syphilis and child sex trafficking and all that other enslaving of the Indians that they did. And so I just want you guys to be aware that at the state level, you know, we are taking these issues seriously and we are doing things to combat that legacy, that really awful legacy that was left that still harms indigenous women to this day. And I'll just share a little, something paraphrased from the Department of Justice Executive Office. The US Attorney General in 2017, he was explaining how women on reservations are targeted by sex traffickers because they are too afraid to cooperate with law enforcement and they're likely to be ignored by society. So when women on the reservation are sex trafficking, they go missing. You know, are we going to call the cops? Maybe not. And this is related to what the mayor was saying in his community survey. And he was saying how, you know, people are saying that they are satisfied with the police service. And I would just like to point out that Kaylee Markham, 23 years old, and Renee Francisco Dominguez, 38 years old. Those are two women in Pueblo who were killed in domestic violence cases, which is, you know, related to missing and murdered indigenous women. They were killed and their partners were known to be domestic violence perpetrators. They had, you know, crimes already on the books and the police weren't there to help them. So and you know, there are 27 people over the past 10 years who were killed at the hands of Pueblo law enforcement. So those 27 people, they weren't, they weren't here either to participate in that survey because they're dead. And I just want to, you know, reiterate that like when we're talking about things like the legacy of colonization, the legacy of slavery, the police as an institution, they are part of that legacy and they do perpetuate that, that harm. Just as how I explained, you know, there are certain people in our community that are protected and there are certain people who are not. And so I would just like to, you know, bring it up to you guys again and just ask you, you know, if each one of you as our, as our public servants, as our elected officials, you know, does it reflect your values as a person, you know, to honor this, this type of person who perpetuated all these wrongs, genocide, famine, sex trafficking, like does that resonate with your values? Does that fit with your values? And I'm not saying that we need to take down the statue, but I'm saying, what does it mean to leave it up? And are you, are you? Um, and I'm not saying that we need to take down the statue, but I'm saying, what does it mean to leave it up? And are you, are you honoring, you know, him and honoring his legacy by leaving it up? So I just would like you guys to consider that and think about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our public forum tonight. Ms. Lano, do you have anything from the?
Thank you, Madam President, City Council. I do have just two messages from the mayor during commentary. The first is that he did send out earlier today, uh, yesterday afternoon, uh, the June sales tax report that did reflect an eight percent increase for the month of June. That leaves a six month um, increase um, of four point three percent above last year. The budget was to increase sales tax by three point five. So we're in the itsy bitsy phrases of holding our own through the first six months of, of the year. Um, and the second um, update is that we did receive the economic dashboard for the month of July, uh, just today and um, it will be out. Haley will have it out on the website and to all of you um, tomorrow. And it did accompany a nice narrative of an explanation and interpretations. And so that that was received from Dr. Bailey earlier today. And those are the two updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lano. Um, I'm going to go ahead and start us off tonight and I just want to apologize to everybody that's sitting in the galley for our uh, public forum. It shouldn't ever be a hostile environment here and we encourage people to come and speak in front of the council with their needs, questions and concerns. So sorry, all of you had to witness that. Um, as far as the Gulf Monument goes, I will be more than happy to talk to Public Works and the rest of the council to see what if we need to put a resolution forward or what we need to do to get that going up. Um, as it pertains to the agenda tonight, you're going to see my request for the forensic audit. Again, I'm going to have to ask for a continuance. The audit is still not complete. Um, the city has asked for an extension until September thirtieth. I would like to report that on Thursday, I had the pleasure of meeting with the new auditing firm. The reason for the delay with the audit is that this, if this is their first year and they are working through some stuff with the city, I can report that they have found some policy changes that need to be addressed. They will be coming before us in October with their complete list of findings. The single audit that you have heard me talk about, according to them, has not even been started. And so they are just now looking into the coronavirus relief arm, relief money and ARPA money. So stay tuned for another update. I am pleased to report our finance department has been working their butts off to get them everything they need. And so thank you to our finance department. I have also um, been working with the mayor's office and the tax office on getting some of the ARPA money back to small businesses. Um, with setting certain parameters forward. Um, if you have a small local business and you are in our census tract and you gross less than two hundred thousand dollars um, in a timeframe that we're trying to narrow down, well, we're going to be happy to provide you um, back with some of your sales tax dollars in grant form. And so that's pretty cool because the ARPA money really hasn't been used to give back to small business. And so I'm pleased to announce that I'll be bringing this resolution forward to take some money out of the ARPA money. And I've also been, had my second meeting for the, the budget committee and the non-departmental budget requests are in and I received them last week. And so um, the mayor has them, I have them. So we'll be um, looking over to them, looking over them. And then also within that budget committee, I've liked to take on councillor winner had made a request uh, for one million dollars for cleanup, whether that be trash, homeless, the homeless camps. Um, and so I'd like to work with councillor winner and the rest of the council, if they have any ideas to put forward the budget, um, to ask for the one million dollars out of the budget and I'll be happy to, to lead that if you can supply me with the information on exactly what you want done. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on tonight is the news story that everybody saw um, air on Friday night by Sean Rice and K R D O. And it was on the front page of the paper today. The allegations of discrimination by the mayor and the city. I can't make much comment on this because it is pending litigation, but what I would like to say, it is my personal opinion that this is not a reflection on our city clerk or our city clerk's office. These people are doing an excellent job. This is a reflection of the direct leadership we have in the mayor and the appointing he does. It pains me to see another lawsuit this year. The city will suffer. I'm also confused why the council has to find out about this on the five o'clock news or on the front page of the paper and the council is never informed on this prior. Which takes me to my next point. There is no communication with the mayor in his office. It is very hard getting information that we need to get our job done. The information, in fact, if we get it is always filtered and it takes at least two weeks. I really believe that if we want to eliminate some of this confusion with the mayor in his office, it would actually help if he attended the city council meetings. If we are supposed to work together as a team for the city, it would make sense if he was here to participate. And yes, I know this is not the meet, the marriage meeting. It's a city council's meeting, but we have a strong reform of government and we are hitting roadblocks and we are not being able to, under one roof, discuss the best road for Pablo to take. Councillor Winner, do you have anything?
Well, I think, uh, you know, during, if anybody saw work session, um, I brought up an issue with um, some citizens that want to uh, wanted to repeal the strong mayor and wanted a citizen's petition to go back to the city manager form of government. And um, you said nobody was calling you, uh, and you didn't know anybody that wanted to, to do that, but, but from what you just said, you want to do that. So I, I just, I, I'm a little confused, but yeah, I totally, I totally agree with you.
I, I, I mean, I'm not arguing with you about, you know, I don't know if it's the, the person or the position, but I think that we need a few more mayor's um, time to, to see if it's the person or the position. Counselor Flores.
I guess I'm forced to uh, respond. Um, I probably have communication with the mayor's office at least, I don't know, twenty times a, a week and I do it by email. I don't go, and I don't go directly to any director. That's not our job. It's a city council. But I do go through uh, the chief of staff. And uh, I, I have the opposite view that I get a response immediately. Uh, and when they don't have an answer, uh, they just ask me for additional time and normally I, I didn't expect that to happen that quickly. But uh, I get a response on every item that I ask for. So I guess I have a little bit different view than you do. And then we continually see this ordinance of a forensic audit. And let me tell you what a forensic audit is. It is kind of accusing our community and our accounting department that some nefarious thing is going on. A forensic audit is indicating to the public that in the city of Pueblo, there's some embezzlement going on, some sort of a uh, fraud, which is so untrue. We've always had a clean audit in Pueblo. And for that agenda item to still be on our agenda is just incredible. I would imagine that if you're a bond rating service and they, they get news on a newspaper or this meeting, that somehow we're considering a forensic audit. Uh, I'm wondering what that would do to our bond rating. And so I have no idea where this came from out of the air that there's something wrong going on in the city of Pueblo, which is so untrue and so unfair. Uh, until we have, you know, audits are done just to correct things. And uh, as long as I've been on the council, this will be my sixth year, we've never had any inkling that there was any kind of nefarious thing going on within the city. That's what a forensic audit is. And um, I guess we'll just be kicking this forensic audit ordinance down the line. But I'm so opposed to it. Uh, I can't even tell you. There was something else I wanted to say, but those are two things that uh, were my priority. Thank you.
Councillor Maestri.
Um, well, in the last meeting, I'm, I have another little item to add to my uh, list of things I'm concerned about, um, the city's needs and, you know, where are we going to get the money from for them? You know, so now it's forty million, the mayor quoted possibly for the Union Bridge and they're going to apply for grants for that construction. Um, but there's always still an out of pa- out of pocket expense from, from the city budget. Um, also, uh, we debruised, um, so our excess revenue, we're not going to be getting a refund check from like we are from Governor Polis at the state because we forfeited that in the last election. Um, and so that we dedicated uh, five million towards roads. So we had five million in the budget and we added five million from the debreusing. Um, so again, we gave up taxpayer money for that. Um, we have twelve hundred miles of road repair approximately, according to to Mr. Hayes um, from the Public Works Department and the study that they did. Um, we're looking at five million, five miles at two million a mile, but let's just say that we it costs us a million dollars a mile. That's one point two billion dollars. That's going to be a lot of excess revenue over years and years to actually make that up. And we know everything's in disrepair as we speak. Um, we have uh, fire stations and we're in desperate need of four of them. And that's about on a thirty to thirty-five million dollar budget that the chief is putting together and we don't have any money budgeted for that. So we've already taken uh, money out of the savings for the design of those fire stations. And then um, I guess we're possibly getting a loan to build the four fire stations. And um, we get about three point five million, um, ta- in tax of, for the police department, which we were able to since twenty sixteen at least bring the um, police department up into the twenty-first century. I don't know if you guys remember the peeling paint on the cars and our police cars and so forth. Um, so we're, that ballot is, that ballot initiative is coming back this year. That's probably one of the only things I don't want to kill the police in any of this. I mean, we have, we're lacking in such resources. Um, and we're lacking as far as legislation. Um, and the officers are, you know, just taking a hit publicly. Um, and so I do support continuing with that ballot. But again, that's taxpayer money that we're still asking for over and above the money, the revenue that we receive in this community. We're asking the taxpayers to kick in some extra and get it done. Um, we have um, and yet we have a ballot initiative out there that wants to take revenue from it, from the marijuana industry. They want to take the revenue, the excise tax, which the excise tax is paid by the cultivators. Um, and um, that's um, uh, I don't know why we would be taking money, revenue away from the city, why anybody would support, any leadership would support um, taking revenue away from the city, especially when we have all these needs. Um, the other thing I have a question about too, is I see that there is a lobbyist um, on the line item that council pays for. And I'd like to meet that lobbyist. I'd like to know what she does. I'd like to see a work session on that. Um, because you know, we have a lot of things that go through legislation that I don't know as a community, we would really necessarily want to vote for. So we'd like to know what's going on up at, um, and what our lobbyist is, how she's representing us. And so um, I'd like to, to meet her as a council person. If we're giving her a thou- or paying her monthly, then I'd like to see what she's doing for us. Um, the other thing too is I support um, President Graham and her request for forensic audit. Um, she's um, an intelligent enough businesswoman to have taken uh, some of the um, documents she's been given in regards to the ARPA and the cares money and so forth, and to see so many um, numbers that are just not adding up. Um, the audit that's done um, annually is an audit that's done on general accounting practices. It's doesn't really determine whether or not there is a a discrepancy in the numbers or, or any kind of nefarious thing. A forensic audit um, is what isn't, is what's asked for here, what she's requested for. And um, I'm going to back her um, in that request. Also, right here in council, on record, we ask for things that we don't receive until months later, fifteen minutes before a meeting, two hours before a meeting. And things get voted on and we still don't have the um, information that we've been looking for. So transparency, the fact that she asked for transferring, she, she ran on transparency like most of us. And so that's what we're requesting is transparency from the mayor's office. Uh, the other thing, um, so I realize there's a difference of opinion in this community. Um, in regards to the Christopher Columbus statue. There's a lot of Americans in this community that um, are glad to be here. Maybe they weren't, their families weren't originally from here, but this is where, what, where we're at. Um, as far as the diseases and everything broke, brought in, we're still experiencing that today. Look at what we just went through with the COVID. You know, um, and yet, you know, people are asking for open borders. So um, it would be, I realize everyone has an opinion, but I would really like to keep the community as a whole. We are a melting pot. I don't want, I would appreciate not seeing uh, discrimination from any culture to another culture. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor Atencio.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that uh, some of you guys who appear on council may not be getting a lot of communication through the mayor's office. Every time I talk to um, chief of staff, I get exactly what I'm looking for. Uh, she goes out of her way to make sure that I do. As far as communication of these seven people, I have yet to have a full conversation with just about anything. Um, this winter and I talk at least once a week, maybe a couple of times. Dennis and I talk once in a while. Other than that, you and I talked once. Um, but that's it. It's not like we communicate up here. Um, freely either, you know, everybody does their own little thing and I'm fine with that. I'll do my thing and I'll continue doing it and I'll do as, as much in as, as I can. And then uh, I have another thing. I was driving into town uh, last week. And um, I don't know, is that entrance to the city on that bridge on Dillon Bridge, is it ever going to be done? That artwork? That crafts work? It's not art, it's crafts. It's craft work. But anyway, is it ever going to get done? And then on top of that, literally from uh, a mile north into the city weeds up and down the median and on the sides. I mean, can't we get C dot to do something about that weeds all the way down the median and on the sides of the freeway, all the way down through, all the way through town. I was on Santa Fe Avenue yesterday at the Ilics interchange and the, the hills on the, on the freeway, the grass is dying. It's brown already. It's you know, it's, I mean, it, the, the, uh, the south entrance on the city center drive onto the freeway. Uh, that nice rock there, the weeds are already growing there as I came down uh, on the freeway to city center drive, the weeds on the exit from the freeway to city center driver unbelievably tall. Uh, I was on Fourth Street today between Maine and, and um, what's uh, Court, man in Court, there's weeds on Fourth Street between Maine and Court on, on the sidewalk. Goodness gracious. We used to be called Pride City. Doesn't anybody have any pride in the city anymore? I mean, come on, people. I keep harping about think bigger, Pueblo. And you know, maybe I start thinking think something, Pueblo. You know, uh, I understand putting a million dollars in to clean it up, but no, I'm sorry, I can't go with that. That's a waste of money. Uh, I, I would put a million dollars into beautification. You know, which reminds me, uh, the uh, bump outs downtown on a grade of who are the excellent, I give them a poor grade. All of those bump outs, and there's a few little things growing in them, but they're not anywhere near where they go. We have a landscape committee and I guess from what I've heard, their emphasis is putting trees, which is fine. I want trees all over the place. And then another thing I've been asking, how about fruit trees in our city parks, especially in low income neighborhoods where a person could probably go in. A lot of cities are doing this, by the way. Putting fruit trees in low income neighborhood parks and the people there can go get apples and whatever fruit trees grow in that particular region. Nothing wrong with that. Uh, I talked to Parks and Rec and they said. Nothing wrong with that. I talked to Parks and Rec and they said, oh, no, we couldn't do that. Of course we couldn't do that. It's all we think is that we can't do anything. I mean, think bigger, Pueblo. Come on, we could get things, we could do things. Nothing. He said whether.
Counselor Martinez.
Um, gosh, I feel like work session and regular session was crazier today than we've had in a while. So I want to start with gratitude and appreciation. Marissa Stoller, I think, is one of the finest department directors that works in the city. And she is always on top of it, always concise, always reads all of the things so quickly. She moves our meetings along. And I'm, as a young woman, I'm really proud to work with Marissa. Haley Sue Robinson tonight gave a stellar plan for improving our communication as a city. And as a young woman, I'm really proud to work with Haley Sue Robinson. Alyssa Parga tonight told us about her plan to make boards and commissions in the city more equitable and more inclusive. So that way our boards and commissions match up with Pueblo demographics. And, and she's doing tremendous work on that. And I, as a young woman, I'm really proud to work with Haley Sue Robinson. President Graham, or not Haley Sue Robinson, sorry, Alyssa Parga. President Graham tonight, gosh, dropped the gravel, I think, for the first time since being on, on council. And I thought you did a really great job. And as a young woman, I'm really proud to work with you. So I want to start with gratitude because today has been nuts. The Targela family, I have your information right here. I wrote down your phone number. I'm going to give you a call tomorrow. And I'm more than happy to help with that effort, particularly Elmwood's in my district. So we'll make, we'll make something happen. Speaking of my district, the Pueblo Zoo has offered, gave me a tour last week. For those of you that don't know, our zoo is actually accredited. It's one of the only smaller zoos in the whole nation to be accredited. And they actually have a really pretty robust conservation effort for all of the animals. And I wanted to thank the zoo for that. And they actually are starting a North America, you know, kind of exhibit in the zoo, which I think is going to highlight a lot of kind of our Pueblo and Southwest culture. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to, to see those plans. Councilman Martinez Ortega and I have been working with Public Works on a plan for trash mitigation around the state fair. You know, I, I know that, that District Three and District Four, which we represent, speaks a lot about trash around the fair. There's people that live there who are really upset. And so I think that we're coming up with a plan right now to do a lot of trash mitigation around those surrounding neighbors, neighborhoods. So that way there is Pueblo pride around the state fair. We're working on that. Thank you, Public Works, for putting a plan together. And then I, I just wanted to say happy back to school. I know that I have several youth advisors who are starting school tomorrow. So happy back to school for D sixteen, D seventeen.
Counselor Martinez Ortega.
No.
Okay, great. Moving on. Review and approval of the agenda and we're going to go page by page. Page one. Counselor Tensia. Oh, did you?
Let me get to page two.
Page two.
I'd like to move M six to the reg- regular agenda. Steve Sapp talked about it, but we didn't get any, I did questions, so. I'd like to move M six to the regular agenda.
Okay, page three.
I would like to move M as a Mary five to the regular agenda.
On page two, yeah. Okay, page three. Page four. Page five. I'm going to continue Q two to October tenth. Page six. Page seven. Page eight. And page nine. Okay, no other adjustments. Do I have a motion to approve?
I motion to move items M five and M six to the regular agenda and continue item Q two to October tenth.
I have a second. Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote. Passes seven zero, reading an approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to dispense the minutes?
I motion to dispense the reading and approve the minutes of the regular meeting dated Monday, January twenty fifth, twenty twenty-two as distributed.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, consent agenda.
I'm sorry, I think we're a little concerned that October tenth is a holiday for the city and that the, the tenth meeting might be moved to the eleventh of October. So we're, we're just checking that real quick.
Okay. So we need to amend an emotion?
Yes, if we can amend the the postponement of Q two to October eleventh.
I make a motion to postpone the item Q two to November eleventh.
Sorry, October eleventh, yes.
Okay.
Second.
See if Daryl has set up an extra vote for us. We'll give it a minute.
Okay, so we're voting for the approval of the agenda again. Okay, passes seven zero.
Thank you. Honest to. Nope, I think we're good. I will start reading. Consent agenda, L Communications, one, non-submitted. M resolutions, item M one, a resolution ratifying an emergency construction contract, the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars to Doug Von LLC for project number twenty-two dash zero six eight E thirteenth and Ojin. Emergency concrete and asphalt repair project and approving the purchasing agent's execution of same. Item M two, a resolution awarding construction contract, the amount of one hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars to toll and mechanical and setting for thirty-six thousand four hundred eighty dollars for contingencies. Project number twenty-two dash zero four seven HVAC group top unit replacement for Pueblo Transit and authorizing the purchasing agent to execute same. Item M three, a resolution ratifying an emergency construction contract, the amount of ninety-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and forty-four cents with Parker Excavation, Inc. For emergency sanitary sewer point repair at twelve oh one Francisco, project number twenty dash zero five nine WWAN O three and approving the purchasing agent's execution of same. Item M four, resolution authorizing the city of Pueblo to refund sanitary sewer fees of eighty-seven thousand seven hundred ninety-seven dollars to Goodrich Corporation. Item M seven, a resolution transferring twenty thousand dollars from projects to be determined account in the excess court fines fund to the vehicles enrolling stock account in the excess court fines fund. Item M eight, a resolution authorizing issuance of a revocable permit to ESA Pueblo LLC for use of the North Elizabeth Street right of way at sixty twenty North Elizabeth Street for the purpose of installing trees. And M nine, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a revocable permit to Papa Jose's for use of the South Union Avenue right of way to continue use of the existing sidewalk cafe at three twenty South Union Avenue. Item M ten, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a revocable permit to the food truck union for the use of a portion of Goodnight Avenue inside of City Park on Sunday evenings between August fourteenth and October thirty-first to host a weekly food truck event. Item M eleven, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a revocable permit to Pueblo Community College for the use of the Orman Avenue between Harrison Avenue and Arthur Street and their right of ways to hold a back to school recruiting event on Saturday, August sixth, twenty twenty-two. Item M twelve, a resolution authorizing the city of Pueblo to apply for twenty twenty-two Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, and approving a memorandum of understanding concerning receipt and disbursement of funds from said grant and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Item M thirteen, a resolution approving a donation of property and release of claims between the city of Pueblo Municipal Corporation and the city of Lamar, Colorado, relating to a CRA FCO crack fill machine located at the Pueblo Memorial Airport. Item M fourteen, a resolution setting the date, time and place for the hearing on any objections to an abatement assessment as September sixteenth, twenty twenty-two at nine AM in city council chambers and directing the mayor to appoint a hearings officer. Item M fifteen, a resolution confirming the appointment by the mayor of Deborah McElroy to the ADA Advisory Committee. And ordinances first presentation, item M one, an ordinance approving an agreement for professional service engineering services in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents between the city of Pueblo, the municipal corporation and AECOM for consulting engineering services with respect to the West Twenty-Ninth Street Drainage Improvement Sign and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Item N two, an ordinance approving and accepting a Colorado Department of Transportation CDOT Aeronautics Division Grant, number twenty-two dash PUB dash zero one for funds, the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred and twelve dollars for both the runway eight R dash twenty-six L rehabilitation design and the snow removal equipment acquisition projects. Authorizing the mayor to execute same, budgeting and appropriating seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars to project number AP twenty-two oh five. We have runway eight R dash twenty-six L designing construction and budgeting and appropriating ten thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars to project number AP twenty-two oh one, snow removal equipment, SRE. Item N three, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Pueblo and the Pueblo Regional Building Department for the sharing of costs related to Pueblo means business web portal and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Item N four, an ordinance approving a grant agreement between Pueblo Municipal Corporation and State of Colorado acting by and through the Colorado Department of Natural Resources and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Item N five, an ordinance amending zoning restrictions to rezones parcels five two seven three zero six zero zero three and five two seven three zero six zero zero four from A four agricultural four zone district to I two industrial zone district. Item N six, an ordinance amending chapter one of Title Ten and chapter one of Title Fifteen of the Pueblo Municipal Code with regards to electric bicycles, electric scooters and other electric devices. And N seven, an ordinance approving and accepting an agreement between the city of Pueblo and the US Department of Justice Bureau alcohol, tobacco and firearms regarding reimbursement of police personnel overtime and other expenses accrued while working joint operations. Item N eight, an ordinance submitting Title Eleven of the Pueblo Municipal Code by the addition of a new chapter thirteen relating to the creation of a community service officer position and establishing authority and enforcement powers in accordance therewith. Item N nine, an ordinance submitting to the eligible electors of the city of Pueblo, Colorado at the special municipal election to be held on November eighth, twenty twenty-two, a question relating to the extension of the one-fifth percent, point two percent sales and use tax rate for the five years of police personnel and operating costs and the adoption of ordinance number one zero two six zero to implement the extension. Item N ten, an ordinance submitting to the eligible electors of the city of Pueblo, Colorado at the special municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-two, the question of reestablishing the city's authority to provide or to facilitate or partner or coordinate with service providers for the provision of advanced high-speed internet service, cable television service and telecommunications service, either directly, indirectly, or by contract to residential, commercial, nonprofit government or other subscribers and to acquire, operate and maintain any facility for the purpose of providing such services, restoring local authority and flexibility that was removed by Title twenty-nine, Article twenty-seven, Part One of the Colorado Revised Statutes without increasing taxes.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam President, I move to approve all resolutions set forth in the consent agenda. Pass the ordinances of the consent agenda, setting the public hearings for Monday, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, and order the ordinances to be published by night.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, regular agenda.
Q resolutions, item Q one, a resolution authorizing payment in the amount not to exceed six hundred sixty thousand dollars from project CI twenty-two one thirteen, CI twenty-one thirteen, American Rescue Plan Act for two government service projects as authorized by section six oh three, print C, print one, print C of the American Rescue Plan Act and US Treasury Final Rule thirty-one CFR thirty-five dot six.
May we have a staff report?
Madam President, members of council, as you know, under ARPA, ARPA authorizes a revenue replacement fund for metropolitan cities, including the city of Pueblo. The city's lost revenue has been calculated at ten million dollars. This resolution authorizes payment of six hundred and sixty thousand from the revenue replacement fund for two city projects. The first is for HARP, security cameras in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. The second is six hundred thousand for airport parking lot resurfacing. And that is staff's report.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a second. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Excuse me, I think we need to have M five and M six that were pulled from.
Oh, my apologies. We can continue voting on this one and we'll go to this.
Passes seven zero.
Item M five, a resolution awarding an agreement for professional services, the amount of eight thousand dollars to Sherry Schaefer to complete work as the succession planning coordinator for Pueblo Food Project in partnership with Civic Canopy.
May we have a staff report?
Madam President, City Council, I'll, I'll provide the staff report. This ordinance requests your approval to use grant funds to pay a professional agreement to Sherry Schaefer, who is an employee of the Colorado State Extension Office. And in our, in our continuing conversation to transition the Pueblo Food Project out of city operations and leadership into what we hope will be its own five oh one C three nonprofit. The work that Pueblo Food Project is doing is, is difficult to coordinate by one individual without the appropriate background and credentials such that Monique Mahrez had. And so they're working on distributed leadership for someone who can, who has experience in access environment, food economy, like the entrepreneurship program, coordinating with agriculture and then advocacy. And the work is with state provided Civic Canopy that will continue. We have been offered and submitted an opportunity to apply for a four hundred thousand dollar two-year grant to continue the work that the Pueblo Food Project has begun. The grant was submitted about three weeks ago. We should hear before September thirtieth, whether we receive the grant or not. And that also will have the remaining funds to consult with someone to actually submit the, the five oh one C three application that will require per forma financial statements and the establishment of a board and the looking forward into the longevity. These, again, this eight thousand dollars is for the services to coordinate that effort. And it does come from grant funds, the, the current Colorado Health Foundation funds. And that does conclude staff's report. And I'm, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve? Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Well, it sure does answer my questions. There's only a staff of two or three people in the Pueblo Food Project, correct? And then it said succession planning. If the top one drops out, the second one in command would take over and it didn't take eight thousand dollars to figure that one out. But the way you put it is to plan for the board and the everything else. It makes sense now. Thank you.
Any other questions? How long will these consulting services last?
This particular one through the end of this year, through the end of December, the thirty-first, because the grant would be, I've received its resources then. And either this will continue in a different format or we will put a request for bid out for someone to coordinate the, the true application of the five oh one C three.
Thank you. Okay, call for the vote. Passes seven zero.
Item M six, a resolution approving a service agreement between the city of Pueblo and Flauti and Hood, PA, in the amount of one hundred and one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and setting for three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars in contingencies for consulting services for the forming, performance of a comprehensive compensation study and analysis and authorizing the purchasing agents execute same.
May we have a staff report?
Yes, Madam President and members of council, this is Marissa Pacheco, HR Director. The resolution before you approves a comprehensive compensation study for the city's approximately two hundred and thirty-seven classifications. The funding for this was approved by city council back in April using ARPA funding. And the amount that was approved for this particular project was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, um, you know, we're coming in about twenty thousand less than what we anticipated. The scope of services involved with this is, is fairly comprehensive. We haven't done a study like this in, um, you know, I don't, I don't think in anyone's recent memory. So I'm talking several decades that a full comprehensive study has been done. We do market studies annually to check on, you know, spot check market for most of our classifications. Police and fire tend to be a little bit easier because we have access to data. But there are hundreds and hundreds of city jobs that have not properly been compared to our market data. So not only will this study provide that external view of how does the city compare to the external market in terms of compensation levels, but it's also going to look at our internal structural issues. Over the years, we've developed compression issues, overlapping ranges, just with, with different pay increases that have happened over the years. So, uh, we're really excited about this project. It will also include an analysis of pay equity among incumbents to make sure that we are not affecting groups differently in terms of how compensation is being provided in the city. And my final statement will be that this particular firm is going to allow us to have a total compensation view. So it's not just going to be wages, but it's going to be other pay benefits to include health insurance, paid leave, retirement, things like that. Uh, so we're going to get a full, complete view of where we stand as an organization in terms of competitiveness, competitiveness in terms of our pay. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Pacheco. Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second? Any discussion? Counselor Tencio.
Thank you. Uh, my question was that we just recently agreed to, uh, with our unions on compensation, on new contracts. And my thinking was a comprehensive compensation study after we signed the contracts. Seems like closing the door after the horses have left the barn. Is this compensation study going to be good for, uh, I don't know, let's see, our, our contracts are for two years. Will this be accurate two years from now? Will we know what, uh, what we're doing then?
Sure. That's a great question. And I can tell you that there was great interest when we went to the table this last year, particularly from our General Services Union about the prospect of this study being completed. Because their bargaining unit is really the one that has the majority of positions that really need that in-depth market analysis. And so they were very excited that we were going to do this, knowing that the agreement that we have with them for the next couple of years is in place. You are correct. We've agreed to those pay increases. However, you know, we have a very positive working relationship and we anticipate that once these results are in, that we would be having ongoing discussions about particular job classes that may need to be adjusted. It's much better to try to tackle those in a phased approach than trying to do the whole thing. I think that what you're going to see from this, this firm, and we did do a competitive RFP for this process, is they're going to bring back to not only city council, but the workforce, the findings, but then also the financial implications of responding to those and how you appropriately age data up to, to cover that concern that you have is this lasting data. They know that we need this data to be helpful for several years. And so they are going to have that aging component within their findings. So I, I, I think that they have that, that perspective definitely covered. And I think all of our bargaining units are very interested to see what the results are.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. And that's exactly what I wanted to hear. So, uh, thank you very much. Good work, Marissa.
Any other discussion or questions from Ms. Pacheco? Call for the vote. Oh, Counselor Maestri.
Um, Ms. Pacheco, I wanted to ask you, I've had a previous and current city female employees that have said that they've taken positions that were formerly held by male employees and that they're getting less pay. Is there any way that you could assure us on council that that's not happening? Maybe provide us with a report? You know, uh, so that is a concern. And that's an, it's an accusation. I don't know if it's valid or not, but I'd like to be reassured that that isn't happening.
Sure. I think that's a fair question and, and I do think that that's one of the valuable aspects of this study is they are going to do a deep dive in terms of pay equity, not just along the lines of gender, but other, um, um, you know, classifications and differences between people to make sure that we are paying across the board in a fair and equitable fashion. To, to make a broad statement to you, um, you know, do I think there's a, a widespread issue of that in the city? I, I really don't. You know, I try to be very cognizant when I see those personnel action forms come through for a hire to make sure that we're looking at those kinds of compensation issues. I think there are a multitude of factors that go into those decisions. Someone may have been coming in with far more experience or less experience and it just really depends on the situation. But I can tell you that we have eyes on that. Um, and I can certainly try to run a report. That might be difficult to, to do that actually. But I, I want to assure you that it's on the radar and that we are definitely taking a look at that and try to do it now. But I think this study actually provides us with a really great mechanism to, to really formalize those findings and make sure that we're really clear on where we are with respect to those issues.
Yes, I appreciate that. The example that was given to me is that this employee, a former male employee retired, retired several years ago. And the person that is currently in their position is still almost ten percent less than what they were getting paid when they retired out. I think it's been more than five or six years. So I would like to see if that is possibly happening.
Okay. And perhaps this isn't the right forum to ask the question, but if you could.
No, I'm not asking you to clarify now. I'm asking, I'm just trying, I'm looking for, and I would like to.
Absolutely. And if you could actually
transparency.
Share that information with the, the chief of staff when you get an opportunity, I could actually look into that specific instance. But I would just say as a general statement, we, we are really trying to be cognizant of that. I can, I can't sit here tonight and tell you that it hasn't ever happened. But certainly it's on the radar and I know that, you know, we need to be looking out for those things. But if you want to share the specific example with the chief of staff on the side, I'd be happy to look into that for you.
Yes, I wouldn't really want to reveal the employees who they are because that's not fair to them. But, you know, I'm yeah, so I, but I would like to have some sort of report, making sure that the female employees of the city are receiving equitable pay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pacheco. Uh, call for the vote. Pass a seven zero.
Our ordinance's final presentation, item R one, public hearing and ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a subrecipient agreement between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and the Pueblo Regional Building Department, a governmental entity for premium pay for eligible workers performing essential work as authorized by section six oh three, print C, print one, print B of the American Rescue Plan Act and US Treasury Final Rule Thirty-One CFR thirty-five dot six and authorizing the payment of twenty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-four cents from project number CI twenty-one thirteen, American Rescue Plan Act for purposes thereof, introduced July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two by Counselor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
May we have a staff report?
Madam President, members of council, this ordinance approves a subrecipient agreement with the Regional Building Department. And the Regional Building will provide premium pay to its employees who performed inspections and had face-to-face interactions with homeowners and building contractors during the pandemic. These staff members have been on the front line of government service since the beginning of the pandemic in March, twenty twenty. The grant amount matches the county grant. And the county has already approved awarding this grant to Regional Building. And that's staff's.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Yes.
Can you state your name for the record, Mr. Vaughn?
I got you, got you on. There you go.
Mr. Vaughn, uh, we, we all know who you are, uh, and, and, uh, but we've got to swear you in that you're giving testimony.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give before the publicity council is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Please state your name loudly into the microphone for the record.
What did you say?
Your name.
David Vaughn.
Thank you.
And you, sir, your name, please.
Arnold Montoya.
Thank you. Please have a seat.
Well, good evening, council. We're here tonight to see if we can't get the rest of our ARPA money to our men and women that were served all this time right through the pandemic. That, there's a chart there that'll show you my payroll and how we're going to disperse it. It only goes to the men and women that were actually out in it. So in other words, these are the people that went in and out of homes every day. Uh, the people that were at home are not eligible. So that's how we've had to do that and we've got that completed. The county completed theirs and I already have the check from that side. And we've actually been in more homes, I think, than the fire department or anybody else, maybe the police even. We're in twenty homes a person a day. So we were in a lot of homes. Some of my men caught COVID. I even caught COVID, so it was part of the deal, but we got through it. And we learned a lot. We tried to make our building as good as possible all the way through. I think Larry's toured our building and seen all of that. I'd like to say it helped. I think it did. I mean, we put glass up, permanent barriers, so we'll have all of that in place forever. And it helps, I think, for the general disease too. You're going to talk through glass rather than person to person a lot. So we learned to live on the internet for two years and we got through that also. So it's, uh, and if our customers now and people in Pueblo have learned to use the internet a lot now, so our services in the front counter have dropped off probably to twenty-five percent. Because now they learned that they can have coffee at home and do their work right there from their house, send it through and they get inspected. So that's how it changed us of what we do. But our men certainly deserve that. I feel confident in saying so. Everyone participated and we kept this town building every day. And I mean, everyone in town was building. So we seem to have more business than we ever had in our, since we've been open. Because I think they had a lot of time on their hands and they fixed their homes. So with that, it, uh, it seemed like a a good situation all the way around for us. We, we, we came through the pandemic very well. And at the same time, we served the, the community just like it should have been. Is there any questions at all that, and I can answer, maybe Arnie can answer. He helped a lot put this together. He's my right-hand man for that.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I had a question. You said that only the inspectors were getting paid the premium pay. But as I go through your, your papers here, you have a couple of office people that are getting premium pay and a couple that aren't. Can you explain what the difference is since they will say office?
So some of the office people did encounter the general public as they came into the, uh, to the office to either purchase permits, ask questions. So they're one hundred percent exposed as well as, as an inspector. Some of the people that you've seen on there, they have a lower amount. Right on the graph there. They're showing that, uh, or we show that they're remote. We also took out vacation and sick leave and that's not eligible for ARPA money.
Okay, so not everybody was out in the field. Some people were behind the office desk and are still receiving money.
That is correct, but they were dealing with the general public. At that time, it was face-to-face.
And the two on the first page that I'm looking at, those two people worked from home and so they don't get premium pay?
Yes.
That kind of sucks since they're, you know, part of regional buildings still, still carrying a workload.
Well, I mean, that, that's the rules.
Follow the ARPA guidelines.
Believe me, we would love to give everybody the same amount. It's just we have to follow the guidelines and the laws for, especially if we get audited.
Who decides who's working from home and who's working at the office?
I believe that was, uh, on request of the employees at the time. So some employees asked to work at home and they were allowed to.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions from, for Regional Building? Counselor Flores, did you have something?
No, I just wanted to make a motion, so.
So before discussion. Well, we have to see if anybody else wants to speak against. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, guys. Any, uh, wanting to speak against this ordinance? Okay, I'm seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move. I'll second it.
Call for the vote, sorry. Pass a seven zero.
Thank you, council. We appreciate it. My men will allow so-and-so, all of my women.
Item R two, public hearing and ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a subrecipient agreement between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, Sangre de Cristo Hospice and Palliative Care, a Colorado nonprofit corporation, as authorized by section six oh three of the American Rescue Plan Act and US Treasury Final Rule Thirty-One CFR thirty-five dot six and authorizing the payment of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars from project number CI twenty-one thirteen, American Rescue Plan Act for purposes thereof, introduced July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two by Counselor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
May we have a staff report?
This ordinance awards thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to the Joanie Fair Hospice House. So, um, a, an outdoor patio can be constructed on their campus to allow, uh, folks who are visiting relatives in hospice care to have an outdoor space to sit down. And this will prevent the further spread of the COVID virus. And that is staff's.
Thank you, Mr. Kogosik. Um, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Pass a six one.
Item R three, public hearing and ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a subrecipient agreement between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and the American GI Forum of Pueblo, a Colorado nonprofit corporation, as authorized by section six oh three of the American Rescue Plan Act and US Treasury Final Rule Thirty-One CFR thirty-five dot six and authorizing the payment of forty thousand dollars from project number CI twenty-one thirteen, American Rescue Plan Act for purposes thereof, introduced July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two by Counselor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
May we have a staff report?
Madam President, members of council, the American GI Forum for many generations has been providing counseling and care to American veterans and their families. Uh, this grant is for forty thousand dollars. There are four requirements. First, to hold, um, meetings and events at least monthly to provide information and support to veterans, to advise veterans of their VA and other benefits, educational opportunities, counseling and mental health services, especially those suffering from PTSD, housing and lodging resources and job training programs that are available to American veterans. The second requirement is to keep its facility open as a gathering place for veterans and their families to meet and share meals at reasonable prices. Third requirement. Third requirement is that they open their facility, which is at 125 Hector Garcia Place, right off of Santa Fe Avenue. They're to open their facilities for group therapists, group therapy sessions at no cost to the veterans. And finally, they're to use these funds to repair and maintain their facility, to replace damaged appliances and to pay utilities during the term of the grant. And that is staff's report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Publicity Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your names for the record.
I'm Luis Vazquez Kontez, commander of American G.I. Forum Pueblo Chapter, also a natural commander across the country.
Ted Lopez, treasurer with the American GI Forum Pueblo Chapter.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Like I stated, my name is Luis Vazquez Kontez, and the local commander for Pueblo Chapter in Pueblo, Colorado, also on the national commander across the country. We have all the 500 chapter across the country. I'm here today only to talk about with Pueblo Chapter. They say, I forgot his name. He mentioned to about for the last 20 years, we have provided veteran a PTSD therapy in our location. Also, we'll provide a location for so many people that is needed. As many people, lecturers official have used their home in the past and no cost to them. So the whole ways would be and no cost to a lot of people in this community. I'm here today in support and favor of the $40,000 grant that we applied for so we can continue our legacy that we have in American GI Forum. You know, because we all veteran, I'm combat veteran myself. Because the veteran, that's why we have our freedom today in United States. It was not for vision. We don't have no freedom period. You know, you know, looking for your support and favor of this $40,000 grant. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Also, I have a letter. I don't know if I can provide to you guys a copy. They come from the best center. Since 1998, we have provided this service to these people in this community. So I don't know if I allow me to do that. Thank you.
So I'm here to reiterate what is stated in this ordinance that the American GI Forum Pueblo Chapter does have the authority to and the capacity to perform the terms and conditions of this ordinance and that we are fully aware of our duty to comply with the requirements of this particular ordinance. And that we know that we are accepting federal funds, and with that acceptance requires certain compliance with certain rules as stated in Exhibit B. So we are able to perform the requirements under that exhibit. I have a couple questions. On page two, Section two, Services and Responsibilities of a Subrecipient. I would take it that all of those five documents have been provided with this request. And then, Mr. Kogosik, for Exhibit D to be signed, do we present that at the end of this meeting?
Yes. What you're saying is that you are not going to hire someone who is receiving benefits
Right.
from PERA.
Yes, so we're ready to turn that in once it gets signed.
You can sign it tonight and leave it with me.
Okay.
Mr. Lopez, thank you.
And thank you, city council, for approving our request. And it will be very beneficial to the American GI Forum Pueblo Chapter. And as I mentioned in the work session a few months ago, is we will use that money to leverage it to improve some of the functions and operations of the GI Forum. So we'll keep that building going. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Counselor Mastry?
In all of the ordinances that we've passed for ARPA, why do they have four stipulations? And do they get the money? How are you dispersing the money? Is it in one lump sum? Is it over a period of time?
Yes. I have prepared over 60 sub-recipient agreements. Each one is just like this one. There are grant requirements. They're required by, and I'm sure you've read them all. The grants have specific requirements that are necessary under federal law. So there is
Well, you've actually lumped them all together.
Madam, let me finish.
Okay.
There is a scope of services for every grant. We're not picking on the American GI Forum.
I didn't say you were. I was asking why, because I haven't heard you rattle off another grant with stipulation.
I would be happy to. If you if you read the packet that's online and you read the sub-recipient agreement.
I'm asking you
Exhibit A is scope of services, and it's detailed for every grant recipient.
You were appointed to represent counsel and to advise counsel. I'm asking you a question. I don't need to be told in the manner that you're speaking to me in.
I think it would be helpful if you read the materials prior to the meeting. That's all I'm saying.
I'm just asking you why, because I haven't seen it in others. I haven't seen an outline detail, so I'm asking you. I've seen
I think I get into this question. It's just because usually we have a huge lump sum together, and you don't read every single sub-recipient requirement, correct? But it but they are in there. I've seen them. They're in there.
Right. Thank you for reading in advance, Madam President.
You're welcome. It's our job, Mr. Kogosik.
Oh, gosh, Mr. Kogosik, you know, you we like to we like to utilize your services.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, counsel.
We like to utilize your services.
Yes, I'm glad you do. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes. Sure. Want to turn your mic on so we can? There you go. You're good. You're good.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. We understand that in order to receive funding that we have to expend funds ahead of time, and we present documentation to the city, and I think it's typically on a quarterly basis. So it's on a repayment basis, as it were. So one other question, though, and it may be clear, but in the beginning of the packet on the summary, Previous Council Action, at the end of that paragraph, during the period which began on March 31, 2021, until December 31, 2024, to be extended by December 31, 2026, we have until December 31, 2023, to complete this project. Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Let's vote on this.
Thank you.
Let's get these guys their money. Okay. Hey, here we go. Pass a seven zero.
Item R4, public hearing and ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a sub-recipient agreement between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and the Pueblo Symphony Association, Inc., a Colorado nonprofit corporation, as authorized by Section 603 of the American Rescue Plan Act and U.S. Treasury Final Rule 31 CFR 35.6 and authorizing the payment of $75,000 from Project Number CI 2113, American Rescue Plan Act, for purposes thereof, introduced July 25, 2022 by Counselor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
May we have a staff report?
Madam President, members of council, this grant is awarding $75,000 to the Pueblo Symphony Association for 10 programs. Free symphony for kids, concerts, music literacy project, adopt a music student program, workshop master classes, and many concerts in school locations in the city. Free curtain call tickets for students who are low income, including their parents from low-income families. Apprentice players, student performers as guest artists. So they will be treated just like artists who come from outside of Pueblo County to perform. It will also be used to support the Pueblo Youth Symphony, the Exceptional Students Program, and internships for students. And that is staff's report.
This is the public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing a few.
Please raise your right hand. Please raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. Thank you. Yeah, so I can do them both at the same time. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Publicity Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your names for the record. Thank you.
Well, good evening, and thank you very much for what is it on? Okay. We just hope very much that you will support our programs. They are vital for the students and young people in this community. It's 10 programs. I will tell you, I'm very proud of these programs that we do. We are getting a lot more recognition around the state for what we do. I was just in Denver for an Excel reception. I was rather surprised that so many of the Excel people already knew about all of this. And they had great questions, and they want to come down. I met the new head of Excel here in Colorado, and he'll be down. And so we do great programs. We're really we really have some of the only programs actually in the entire state. So I hope you're as proud of them as I am, and I hope that you will consider the funding for the Pueblo Symphony so we can continue to keep these programs going.
Good evening, esteemed council members. Once again, I'd like to support what June has reiterated. When I used to go to symphony concerts, I had no idea what was involved with the symphony. I had no idea about the money that, you know, that the symphony has to expend to put on a concert. I didn't realize it was in the tens of thousands. But more importantly, I'd like to applaud the symphony for what they do for education. As a former teacher, I find it, I think it's very important to support our youth. There's it's there's more than just athletics and academics. I think the arts are extremely important in the lives of our young people. We provide opportunities at the symphony for students who otherwise wouldn't have the opportunity to enjoy concerts or be involved. I think June probably provides you with the information that every year we invite about 2,400 fourth graders who come and enjoy the symphony, and we did that recently at the university. I was just so impressed with their response. And I, once again, would like to reiterate what June has asked, that we that you consider supporting our request for the grant. Thank you very much.
Board chair here, is there time to hear her or not?
Sure, come on up.
You will. You will have to be sworn in, though. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Publicity Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name into the microphone.
Donna Sialhama.
Thank you.
Yes, I would like to thank you for your past support for the Pueblo Symphony music programs. And I would also like to state again that it is really imperative that we have your support because these music programs are a collaborative effort. And I don't know how many of you are aware. I know you've seen the videos and read the grants. But it is a collaborative effort with other entities in the Pueblo community who are welcoming this opportunity for many children to have experiences with music and the arts because we have included ballet and other musicians that children may never have seen. We are on the campus at the university, which gives them the opportunity to visit the campus and be a part of that that particular day. And so we are very happy that we are able to continue these programs with the support, the monetary support that we get from grants and all of the monies that we get from you. So we would like to thank you very much and ask you to remember that it's not only the Pueblo Symphony that is involved, but it is the community that offers this gift to the Pueblo children and college students, young adults, so forth. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
We have a second? Any discussion? Call for the vote. Pass a seven zero.
Item R5, public hearing and ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a sub-recipient agreement between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and the Senior Resource Development Agency, Pueblo, Inc., a Colorado nonprofit corporation, as authorized by Section 603 of the American Rescue Plan Act and U.S. Treasury Final Rule 31 CFR 35.6 and authorizing the payment of $83,791 from Project Number CI 2113, American Rescue Plan Act, for purposes thereof, introduced July 25, 2022 by Counselor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
We have a staff report.
Madam President, members of council, these funds will be used by SRDA to purchase one 11-passenger van that can accommodate three wheelchairs. The vehicle will be used to transport seniors and disabled individuals for medical appointments, grocery shopping, congress, get meal sites, SRDA-related trips. Bus service will be given to those individuals who are not able to access the buses that the city runs, and they don't qualify for the city lift program. They will operate Mondays through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the urban areas in the county. That includes the city, Pueblo West, Glen, and the Mesa area of the county. The hours will be a little bit longer for people living in the rural parts of the county. That's from 8:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. for Avondale, Boone, Colorado City, Rye, and Beulah. The amount of the grant is $83,791, and that is staff's report.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Publicity Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name for the record and microphone.
It's on Tara Morrow.
Thank you.
Yeah, it won't take a lot of your guys' time tonight, and it's been a long day and a long night. But I just want to say, you know, thank you so much for definitely considering our requests for ARPA. I will say, even since the first reading, here, let me sit down. Even since our first reading, we actually have four vehicles out right now. You know, part of it is is when you deliver 30,000 meals, wear and tear is going to happen on a vehicle. And so now parts of our transportation program are definitely suffering because of it. So we would very much appreciate the support, and we always appreciate the city's support of SRDA.
Thank you, Ms. Morrow. Is there anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? Any discussion? Call for the vote. Pass a six one.
Thank you, Al.
Item R six, public hearing and ordinance approving and authorizing an emeritus sign a subrecipient agreement between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and the Colorado Mission of Mercy Inc., a Colorado nonprofit corporation, as authorized by Section six oh three of the American Rescue Plan Act and U.S. Treasury Final Rule thirty-one CFR thirty-five dot six and authorizing the payment of ten thousand dollars from project number CI twenty-one thirteen, American Rescue Plan Act, for purposes thereof, introduced July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two by Councilor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
May we have a staff report?
Madam President, members of council, Colorado Mission of Mercy will operate a free dental clinic on Friday, September thirtieth, and Saturday, October first of this year. They'll provide dental services to people of all ages who cannot afford dental care. Their goal is to eliminate immediate dental pain, to promote oral health, and provide oral health education. Patients will receive dental treatments such as cleanings, fillings, root canals, extractions, and dental health education. The amount of the grant is ten thousand dollars, and that is staff's report.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Public City Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name in the microphone for the record. I'm Digfeld. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for your consideration and that we are so happy to be coming back to Pueblo and with confidence, we're going to provide a large number of individuals in your community with free dental services. And in, in addition to what our city attorney talked about, we will be doing dentures for individuals. And what's exciting right now is that our goal every year is to bring two hundred dentists. And we've got a boatload of dentists already registered, and they're coming not only from Pueblo, but they're coming from across the state, and they're coming from out of state. So thank you for your consideration. Any questions?
Thank you. Is there anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second? Any discussion? Am I straighted, Joseph?
Just to clarify, this is open, you don't necessarily have to be a Pueblo resident in order to receive services. So it's first come, first served.
Questions asked, Lyman.
But is, the question is asked now, do you also have to be a recipient of a COVID vaccine in order to receive services?
No. Anyone who is not vaccinated will need to undergo a rapid test.
Okay, so it is a questions asked.
It is.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counselor.
What are the dates again?
September thirtieth and October first.
Can, can you give the location that you?
The Colorado State Fairgrounds, the event center.
Thank you.
Okay, call for the vote. Pass a six one.
Item R seven, public hearing and ordinance approving and authorizing an emeritus sign a subrecipient agreement between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and Habitat for Humanity of Pueblo Inc., a Colorado nonprofit corporation, as authorized by Section six oh three of the American Rescue Plan Act and U.S. Treasury Final Rule thirty-one CFR thirty-five dot six and authorizing the payment of three hundred thousand dollars from project number CI twenty-one thirteen, American Rescue Plan Act, for purposes thereof, introduced July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two by Councilor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
May we have a staff report?
Madam President, members of council, this ordinance approves a contract with the city with Habitat for Humanity. The grant award is three hundred thousand dollars. Under the contract, Habitat must build, an owner build, which means that the owner has to help build the home in the city of Pueblo for members of the Pueblo community who are disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. The home must be built and a qualified census tract. And the home must be purchased by low-income individuals who qualify for federal anti-poverty programs. The contract authorizes the construction of one ranch style home for one family or a duplex with two units, but each unit must be at least two bedrooms and one and a half baths, and that is staff's report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
So you both. Please raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Pueblo City Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name loudly into the microphone for the record.
Brandon Blickenstaff.
Thank you.
Rosella Parra.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Council, again for, for hearing us out with this ARPA money. I think we could all agree that housing is a pretty important thing in people's lives. I think you could also all agree that it's getting harder and harder for people to attain housing, especially in the situation that we're currently in with the housing market. Habitat for Humanity of Pueblo, we try to bridge that gap, make it easier for people who, who couldn't purchase a house the traditional way, to get into a home and to provide security for their families. COVID limited our ability to do that by taking funds that we had earmarked for construction of housing and to supplement paying our employees and administrative costs while we were closed numerous times during, during the pandemic. So this money would go straight to building a house to provide for the people of Pueblo. So.
I just want to give, thank, am I on? I just want to thank you for the opportunity and ask for your approval for our request.
Thank you. Is there anybody wishing to speak in opposition of this ordinance? Seeing, seeing one?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Pueblo City Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record.
Elvis Martinez.
Thank you.
With the amount I'm against right here, and then if somebody could tell me exactly where it's going, because I think it's going to be on thirteenth and Ogden or or thirteenth and okay, it's, it's going to be on the Lower East Side, which is high crime. All of us know that. And with three hundred thousand, how does it compare to the other houses in that neighborhood? And the square footage, what's, what is that going to be? It's going to be ADA accessible. And it's in food desert area. So if an elderly person moves in there or a immobile person moves in there or whatever, how are they going to get their groceries and everything? It's the price value of the three hundred thousand dollars on the Lower East Side right there. And we, we've all driven on the east side, whether it was today, yesterday, or last month. It doesn't fit the status for the Lower East Side. A three hundred thousand dollar house, that's probably in mid Belmont North Side area or, or in the South Side area. I don't, I don't know of any houses worth that much within the Lower East Side, south of Highway fifty and east of I twenty-five. I don't know if Mr. Tenzel could chime in on that if he knows more about that area, because I haven't lived on the east side forever. But that's what I have. So if, if Tensi wants to talk about that area, because all of us know it's high crime, low poverty, and a food desert. So all those issues need to get fixed.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion?
Yeah, I got something to say. First of all, there's no more crime on the east side than there is on any other part of town. Yes, it is a low to moderate income neighborhood. But in order to bring these neighborhoods up, the one big way to do it is to establish a family into an owner-occupied home in a depressed neighborhood, thereby raising the standard of the neighborhood. And that's the reason that I'm supporting this is because infill housing in our older neighborhoods is definitely needed. If we're going to bring those neighborhoods up, that's the way to do it, is to put families in there in owner-occupied homes. I also have an idea for the block, the seven hundred block. Uh, I want to talk to you about it. Okay.
Questions, Councilor Maestri?
No, I, I agree in one sense, but you know, creating a three hundred thousand dollar home in the, on the east side sets the precedence for the values of properties on the east side. It, it, it raises the value. So are we able to set that precedence for the, for other people to move into the neighborhood? So I can see where Mr. Martinez's point is also. But really, what I'd like to know is, in this three hundred thousand dollar home, you know, what is the financial portion that Habitat Humanity, Humanity is putting forward? And if you, I realize that you have to take out a loan now in order to build a house. And when you sell that house, you'll be getting the money back and paying that loan. What, what is your reasoning for feeling like you shouldn't have to take out a loan and continue that way until you build your equity back up to where you're building? Why do you feel that, like, you should be able to take this grant and wipe your hands free of it and always continue to move that three hundred thousand? And so that, that's just my take on it. And so that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote. Pass a six one. We're going to take a five-minute recess for anybody that needs to use the restroom.
Anniversary for what? Been engaged?
No.
Congratulations.
A year?
Four years.
Oh, four years.
Okay, here we go. It's nine twenty-three, and we are back in session.
Item R eight, public hearing and ordinance approving and accepting an airport improvement program. AIP Grant Agreement number three dash zero eight dash zero zero four six dash zero four six dash twenty twenty-two from the United States of America, acting through the Federal Aviation Administration, refunds the amount of three hundred thirty-six thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars for cost related to snow removal equipment acquisition for the Pueblo Memorial Airport, authorizing the merit to execute same budgeting and appropriating three hundred forty-five thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars to project number AP twenty-two oh one, awarding the equipment purchase to Wassu Equipment Company and authorizing the purchasing agent to execute same, introduced July twenty-five, twenty twenty-two by Councilor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
May we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Madam President and councilors. This multifaceted ordinance approves and accepts funds from the FAA for the purpose of purchasing a piece of snow removal equipment for the airport. This ordinance establishes, establishes the project and awards the purchase to Wassu Equipment, who was the lowest responsive bidder through the city procurement process. That concludes my report. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? Do we have a second? Any discussion? Call for the vote. Pass a seven zero.
Item R nine, public hearing and ordinance approving and accepting airport improvement program, AIP Grant Agreement number three dash zero eight dash zero zero four six dash zero four seven twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two from the United States of America, acting through the Federal Aviation Administration for funds the amount of two hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars for cost related to the rehabilitation of runway eight R slash twenty-six L Phase One design at the Pueblo Memorial Airport, establishing project at the Pueblo Memorial Airport, establishing project number AP twenty-two oh five rehab of runway eight R dash twenty-six L design and construction budgeting and appropriating 300,585 to said project, approving an agreement between the City of Pueblo Municipal Corporation and Dibble and Associates Consulting Engineering, Inc. for the engineering design for said project and authorizing the mayor to execute same introduced July twenty-five, twenty twenty-two by Councilor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
Do we have a staff report?
Good evening again. Thank you, Madam President and councilors. Uh, similar to the last ordinance from the FAA, this multifaceted ordinance approves and accepts funds from the FAA for the design and construction project to rehab our primary runway at the airport. This ordinance establishes the project and approves the design only portion contract to double engineering. Again, they are only getting the design only this year. Um, so that's the 300,008 or five eight five. Uh, this is a construction project that we're anticipating for next year. The design again to be done with this. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote. Passes seven zero.
Item R ten, public hearing and ordinance approving a rental agreement for the use of an office space and firefighting reload base at the Pueblo Memorial Airport between the City of Pueblo Municipal Corporation and the State of Colorado Department of Public Safety, Division of Fire Prevention and Control, and authorizing the mayor to execute same introduced July twenty-five, twenty twenty-two by Councilor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
May we have a staff report?
Good evening, Madam President and councilors. This ordinance approves a rental agreement for office space to be used by the Colorado State Department of Public Safety to use and maintain the firefighting reload base infrastructure at the Pueblo Memorial Airport. As you may recall, the U.S. Forestry Service used to use this infrastructure to reload the fire retardant to the firefighting aircraft. Uh, they gave it, they left to Colorado Springs and have given the infrastructure back to the city. And now we found a, um, we found a tenant for that infrastructure. So we're excited to have them here. Great partners with the state. That concludes my report. Available for any questions.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second? Any discussion? Counselor Attentia?
Yes, so firefighting aircraft will reload here again?
Affirmative, sir. In fact, we're looking forward to having two-seat aircraft stationed at Pueblo.
Okay, any other discussion? Call for the vote. Passes seven zero.
Our eleven, public hearing and ordinance approving the assignment of a fuel tank agreement by and between the City of Pueblo Municipal Corporation, Sam C. Brown and Travel Air Services, Inc., and authorizing the mayor to execute same introduced July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two by Councilor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
And we have a staff report.
Thank you again, Madam President and councilors. This ordinance approves the assignment of a fuel storage tank agreement between the cities Sam C. Brown and Travel Air Services. This agreement removes Mr. Brown and reassigns the agreement in its entirety to Travel Air Services. This concludes my report. I'm available for questions.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Passes seven zero.
Item R twelve, public hearing and ordinance approving the assignment of a hangar ground lease by and between the City of Pueblo Municipal Corporation, Sam C. Brown and Travel Air Services, Inc., and authorizing the mayor to execute same introduced July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two by Councilor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
May we have a staff report?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, thank you, Madam President, councilors. This ordinance, similar to the previous, approving an agreement for a hangar ground lease, removing Mr. Brown from the agreement and reassigning it in its entirety to Travel Air Services. This concludes my report. I'm available for questions.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? And a second? Yeah, any discussion? First by Mr. Flores, second by Martinez. Okay. Call for the vote. Passes seven zero.
Item R thirteen, public hearing and ordinance approving a deposit agreement between the City of Pueblo Municipal Corporation and Legend subdivision LLC, Utah Limited Liability Company, Stephanie J. Summers, Dale Majors, and Alan Rose, related to the installment and construction of required public improvements within Rivers Run subdivision and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement, introduced July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two by Councilor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
May we have a staff report?
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. The ordinance before you approves and authorizes the mayor to sign a deposit agreement related to Rivers Run subdivision on the east side. Uh, the subdivisions have provided deposits and the agreement just basically outlines the terms and conditions under which that deposit will be handled and returned or liquidated for the completion of public improvements in the subdivision. That concludes my report. I'll take any questions.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call for the vote. Passes seven zero.
Item R fourteen, public hearing and ordinance approving and adopting the twenty twenty-two Pueblo Regional Comprehensive Plan for the physical development of Pueblo, a Colorado municipal corporation, introduced July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two by Councilor Vicente Martinez Ortega. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted six zero on July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two to recommend approval with Commissioner Avalos being absent.
May we have a staff report?
Yes, Madam President and council members. This ordinance approves the twenty twenty-two Pueblo Regional Comprehensive Plan. Colorado revised statute so authorizes municipalities and counties to prepare comprehensive plans as long-range planning documents. Uh, the comprehensive plan provides a framework for zoning, subdivision annexations, and other planning and land use policies. The plan promotes the community's vision, goals, objectives, policies, establishes a process for orderly growth and development, and addresses both current and long-term planning. Cities generally update their comprehensive plans every ten-plus years to reflect changing dynamics of their communities and trends in development. Comprehensive planned elements include land use, economic development, housing, water supply and conservation, sustainability, urban design, transportation, and recreation and tourism. Current uh, Pueblo Comprehensive Plan uh, was adopted by city council in two thousand and two. Plan has been amended numerous times over the twenty-year period. And the city of Pueblo has historically partnered with Pueblo County to jointly develop and approve a comprehensive plan uh, that encompasses Pueblo County, uh, Pueblo's agricultural communities, uh, municipalities, and metropolitan districts. The regional comprehensive plan is adopted separately by uh, the City of Pueblo City Council as well as the Pueblo County Planning Commission. The goal is to maintain common regional plan that can be utilized by both Pueblo County and the city in reviewing future land use activities, proposals under a mutually agreed upon regional comprehensive plan. Since two thousand and two, the dynamics of Pueblo County have evolved. Pueblo, Pueblo's economic growth rated as the fourth highest among Colorado's metropolitan areas. This isn't just the city, it's Pueblo region uh, that this is identified. This has resulted in diversified economy and growing number of individuals moving to Pueblo due to the relative affordability and temper climate. The components of the regional company, comprehensive plan include the following. One, regional goals and policies established uh, that build a broader understanding of the region's shared vision and values, foster regional collaboration on a range of initiatives to help achieve the vision over the next ten to twenty years, and inform day-to-day decisions in all areas of Pueblo. The second uh, element includes a regional development plan that establishes a framework for accommodating and forecasting residents and jobs. These, this framework includes uh, regional growth priorities, infrastructure and services, evaluation criteria for major private development projects, and future land use plan, which includes um, a the uh, proposed future uses uh, of lands that are developed uh, in uh, in the, within the city and within the county, um, and then other specific goals and policies. Uh, section three of the plan identifies six appendices uh, that accompany the plan, which includes a state-of-the-county analysis and a fiscal analysis along with different scenarios and tools for preserving land, uh, conservation lands and an inventory of cultural facilities. That concludes uh, my review of the plan. At this point, we did provide a work session for city council last Monday um, on the plan. Madam President, uh, staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number CP twenty-two oh one, dated July eighth, twenty twenty-two, be made part of the record of this hearing.
So ordered. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second? Any discussion? Counselor Flores?
I have one question. I thought I heard you say that this also included water, availability of water. I, I don't know exactly. And I noticed that uh, or was that included in the changes?
The change, the changes that were proposed in the memo that I provided to the mayor incorporated in this plan. And uh, there were seven suggested changes to the original text in the plan.
And, and uh, I was trying to find in the list of uh, uh, who funded the project and then also there's a list of acronyms because there's so many entities that are involved. The Pueblo Board of Water Works is not part of this. Is that? Is that, is there a reason for that? You would think that that was probably one of the most important elements of any kind of comprehensive plan.
Pueblo, Pueblo Water was included as a major stakeholder in the review and the development of the plan, especially the utilities and water services. They were not necessarily, well indirectly, they were a funder because some of the funds that uh, were made available for the plan were provided through Pueblo Area Council of Governments and this Board of Water Works is a contributing funding member of state.
Councilor Martinez?
Um, congratulations, Scott. I know that this has taken years, so um, I'm happy that you'll have hopefully a new plan soon. Um, now that we have this beautiful new comp plan, I'm wondering if we, the next step then can be going out to RFP for updating the codes?
So the plan is to uh, put together an RFQ to select a consultant to look at uh, revisions to the cities, both land use code title seventeen and title twelve, which is a subdivision code. Uh, the intent is to be able to uh, advertise and solicit uh, proposals from uh, consultants to be able to uh, provide those services. Um, we are intending on applying uh, for a grant to the Department of Local Affairs uh, to assist in uh, in funding the revision to the codes. Uh, those applications go in at the end of this month and the decision is made uh, in December. So we would not, if we are awarded a grant, which funding from the state, we would not be able to actually engage and get the consultant going until after the grant agreement is approved by city council, which would be like right after the first of the year.
Okay, that gives me a better timeline. And I'm wondering if the um, if the DOLA grant does not go through, that would, if the um, rest of the funds or to subsidize the cost of the contractor can come from ARPA? Um, since it's about infrastructure, so I'm, I'm wondering if we-
We have had discussions with the mayor's office about uh, looking at allocating ARPA funds, which would be eligible to make up the difference from, right, right now we have $225,000 of ARPA funds allocated towards the re- revision of the codes. We're looking at applying to, for 200,000 or just under 200,000 to the Department of Local Affairs. That would be enough to complete the plan. If we aren't successful in securing the funds through DOLA, then we would be looking at potentially having additional ARPA money provided.
Any other questions? Mastry?
Um, just to clarify, so the presentation you gave us last week was on the seven changes. And we're not voting on those separately. We are just voting on, you, you've already incorporated those into this plan. And so they're in this plan, correct?
That's correct.
And the plan was already approved by all the other entities that were involved in this comprehensive plan, but yet they're willing to change it if council, you said, votes for it? That's what you said last week.
The two entities under um, Colorado statute that have the the legal authority to approve the plan are the city council in Pueblo, uh, Pueblo County Planning and Zoning Commission.
So you're saying that Pueblo County Planning and Zoning is willing to change it with our changes?
That's my understanding, that they are willing to um, we've reviewed those with the Planning and Zoning Commission, the county and the county planning staff, and they haven't uh, provided any objections to amending the plan and, and have in uh, indicated that they are willing to entertain a change to the plan.
Will they have to go back and get approval on the revisions on their end of it?
The Planning and Zoning Commission would have to uh, have public hearings and vote to amend the plan.
Why, when we, why, when we come together and work on these things and come to a conclusion? Why, why aren't we having the same plan?
Um, we try to have the same plan. I think during the process uh, for the adoption, the issue of the, of leasing of municipal water outside of the city, uh, the proposal to do that came forward and we were, we looked at the plan to see how closely that plan uh, addressed the provision of municipal water, the leasing of municipal water to outside metropolitan districts. Um, and so that prompted the look at the plan. And we found some errors in the plan that uh, incorrectly identified who approved the water quality plan. Um, there were sections of the plan that indicated that metropolitan districts provide all city services, which they don't. So we, we recommended changes that uh, tied the services that metropolitan districts had authorized under their service plan by the Board of County Commissioners. Um, there were, uh, there was wording in the plan that identified services that the city would provide for our own services as regional services. And we had adjusted the wording in that to be services that were provided for city facilities. And then there were four changes proposed in the plan that identified uh, that uh, municipal water should be, if it's provided for uses outside of the city of Pueblo, that it should be for uses that um, support growth and do not uh, provide water for land uses that are not supported by permanent supplies of water.
And, and I guess my concern is, is that when you come together with all the entities and work on this together, why these changes just weren't made before they even approved their portion? So that it's cohesive, because right now, what you're saying is there's no guarantee that they're going to approve these changes.
I mean, there's not an absolute guarantee. Um, and um, I think as we discussed at the work session, that uh, it's not common for cities and counties to have the same uh, regional comprehensive plan. In fact, it's really uncommon that Pueblo has, over the last few plans, um, had the same regional plan that for the county and the city.
Did you know that before you started this project together? Then you guys could have created your own- Then you guys could have created your own master plan.
Yes, we knew that. And it was something that we have, we've worked together on over the years. It also, the reason why this was done in the past was it's more affordable to be able to go through a regional comprehensive planning process under the scenario of having a plan developed both for city and county, rather than having each entity hire consultants to be able to do separate plans. But that's one of the main reasons why that's been undertaken 1980, 2000. But there also has been a willingness to be able to try to have a comprehensive plan that serves both the county and the city. There's been variations over the years. Pueblo County at one point adopted a change to their comprehensive plan that allowed for nuclear plants to be developed in sections of the county, and the city didn't necessarily adopt.
I guess what I'm just trying to understand is you worked on all of this together for months, and you came up with these changes after the fact, and you're putting it on us to, to, you know, back you in these changes. When, if you're working together, why couldn't you guys come up with the changes and implement the changes before you brought it to us for fun? Because right now, our approval means that you're going to have to go back and find out if they're going to accept those changes or not.
Counselor Flores?
You want him to answer that question? Is that a question?
Well, these proposed changes have been distributed and circulated to all of the different stakeholders that have been involved in the process for over a year. We have had no negative responses back to us as far as opposition-
They haven't made a change in their own comprehens, that what they've approved. They haven't made a change yet. I mean, what they could have done is made a change, and then this would have all been already, you wouldn't talk about changes. You would just say, here's the plan.
I mean, the county planning commission could have chosen to defer approving that until these changes were, the plan was adopted, or these were incorporated into the plan. They chose not to do that. That was their decision.
That says a lot, then.
Scott, are you recommending that we approve this?
Yes.
You've kind of lived this, through this whole thing. It's a, it's a 444-page document. And it looks like, if you use just the example that Pueblo West is providing all municipal services, almost, I would think a lot of people would realize that that's just an error, right? So, so the, the changes that you made is really just part of the process, don't you think?
I would say that nearly all of the changes, although the the look at the, at what services metropolitan district and, and how additional water, surplus water is allocated, that's probably the most significant part of the change. And that was provided, those changes were provided to Pueblo Water, who is the entity that is leasing water, and they are not objecting to those changes in the plan.
Would this be similar to, like the instance we had earlier in the year? When you, when you stated that last portion where a municipality that we lease water to has to have a permanent source of water of their own in order to further develop in their community, in, in their community? Is that, is that similar to what went on, what, what you're talking about? Is that wording to where you have, we have more say, if we lease our water to Pueblo West in order for them to develop, they can't develop further because they don't have a permanent source of water? Is that basically what it's?
The plan, the plan identifies that Pueblo West, any metropolitan district, if they, they don't have a permanent supply of water, that would be able to support additional development within their district, that the plan would recommend that water not be provided on a basis for them.
Thank you, Mr. Hobson. Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Item R15, public hearing and ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute and ratifying the mayor's signature to a memorandum of understanding between the city of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and the president and fellows of Harvard College, acting through the Bloomberg Harvard City Leadership Initiative at the John F. Kennedy School of Government, introduced July 25th, 2022, to you by Counselor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
Staff report.
Yes, Madam President and City Council, this ordinance does ask for your approval to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and to ratify the memorandum of understanding with the Kennedy School of Government to welcome and bring on board a Harvard fellow for two years at no cost to the city. The Ortega was selected out of one of eight placed across the country into the city of Pueblo, and that concludes staff's report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion?
I have a question. In, in listening to her discussion, I just wanted to clarify, she was going to be consulting. She was going to basically do a survey of what's going on here in the community, an assessment, and then consulting back to the mayor as to how we should operate in certain, with certain-
She's going to be exploring in different avenues of the city's general fund budget and services throughout the community, including staff. So for instance, she spent time already in HR to look at the demographics of our city employees to determine how they look compared to mirroring the community, and then bringing to that her background and education into, in no decisions and recommendations. And Harvard had asked, of course, that there not be any sort of immediate recommendations, just discussion. We attended a closing to the Leadership Academy, where it's been brought to the attention that city employees have some need for childcare, and she brought to, then her skills to, let's put the survey together. If we have, if we know we have a need, let's really look at the data, what is the need? And so we met with the Children's First Output PCC, and she did create the survey, and it's in, it's in, and right now working with IT to transition it to a survey where we can offer to, to the, to the employees. So we really do have the data to evaluate, you know, where to from here with respect to childcare needs in the community. Not so much that the city would be looking to stand up a childcare center, but perhaps, but perhaps to work in a public-private partnership to where can our, our, our employees access childcare, particularly for dispatch and, and fire and police at, at all hours of the day? You know, they just, we have a hard time staffing some of those positions. So she'll be working on projects like that. The other project that we will be visiting with tomorrow, School District 60 just established a new position for Diversity Inclusion Coordinator for the district, and we're meeting, in that first meeting tomorrow. So not any one particular project, but an awareness and assessment of what might be available for her to look at, how the city has distributed budget in an equity manner for the community needs. She's anxious to get out to some stakeholder meetings. And so that's basically a two-year experience with recommendations, not waiting till the end, but project by project.
Is it equally across the board for all employees of the city that she was looking at? Or is she just looking at a certain demographic?
Right now, she was just capturing the demographics of where we are, so we can look to see, you know, in what area might we want to focus on for her to go and look at differently from her experience in school, and how things were done on the East Coast where she's now spent six years.
So give me an example of a demographic?
Well, I think that we'll be bringing to the budget this year, the demographics in the police department and the fire department, they don't equal the mirror to the community, although police has done really good work to do so. Fire, of course, we all know, we can, and how do we recruit that? How do we regrow our own in the city? What does the exploration look like? How do you see the dream of becoming a firefighter?
And what's, where's the term that you used, social, social equity? Where does that come, come into play? What's that?
It depends on, a social equity could depend on a different program, such as childcare services. It could depend on her, she's been to the ADA meeting last week, she's been to the continuum of care meeting, she's going to be joining Counselor Martinez in a homelessness commission meeting. So I think the term "social equity" would depend on where in the project she would be focusing on.
Counselor Martinez, did you have a question?
Any additional comment?
Yeah, I, I, I am a huge champion of childcare, and I think that's great that you're doing data around that. I guess I'm wondering if the more that you are collecting data, perhaps you can come and present to us like twice a year, biannually, just to give us updates about like the, the things that you're hearing in the city and some of the things that you're working on.
Great, thank you. Okay, call for the vote. Pass of seven zero.
Item R16, public hearing and ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a governmental agreement between the city of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and Fountain Creek Watershed Flood Control and Greenway District, a political subdivision of the state of Colorado and Fountain Creek Watershed Water Activity Enterprise relating to the Pueblo Levy System Flood Plane Restoration Project, introduced July 25th, 2022, by Counselor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
May we have a staff report?
Madam President, members of council, the next two ordinances are related. The first one approves an IGA with the Fountain Creek Watershed District. The second approves an agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad Company. There was a time when there was a railroad called the Denver Western and Rio Grande ran through Pueblo, and they had a bridge which crossed Fountain Creek. Denver Western and Rio Grande was later bought by Union Pacific. The bridge was torn down, but there's a remnant of the bridge that remains. There is still a partial railroad crossing. There are four concrete piers which used to hold up the bridge. There's the bridge abutment. And then you have this dirt embankment that is around where the bridge used to be. All of this presents a flood hazard, because when the Fountain Creek comes down and reaches its crest, all that water pools up and creates a flood hazard for people in the neighborhood. So the first agreement is with the Fountain Creek Watershed District. They will come in at their expense and remove the crossing, the bridge, the abutment. They're going to take out all the soil around the abutment, some of which is contaminated, as railroads contaminate things with lead and coal and other things. But they're going to take all that out, they're going to replace it with fresh dirt, and they're going to plant native seeds, you know, grass, native grass. The important thing is, if you take that abutment out, the water flow will flow directly down toward the confluence, and it lowers the flood hazard to the east side. So that is the first agreement. Fountain Creek will do this at their total cost, no cost from the city. That is staff's report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a second? Any discussion? Call for the vote. Pass of seven zero.
Item R17, public hearing and ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a letter of understanding between the city of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation and Fire and the Union Pacific Railway Company, a Delaware corporation, a seller, pertaining to the conveyance of real property to facilitate the Pueblo Levy Restoration Project, introduced July 25th, 2022, by Counselor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
May we have a staff report?
Union Pacific at its own expense did a survey of the area where we had the abutment and the, and the piers with the bridge and the dirty soil. It's approximately 2.05 acres. They are willing to donate that to the city so that the Fountain Creek Watershed District can then come in and clean it up. So this accepts the property from the Union Pacific Railroad so that Fountain Creek can begin the cleanup, and that is staff's report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Pass of seven zero.
Item R18, public hearing and ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 staffing ordinance by temporarily adding two firefighter positions within the fire department, introduced July 25th, 2022, by Counselor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
May we have a staff report?
Madam President, members of council, thank you. This ordinance allows for temporary over-hire two firefighter positions. The department currently has two EMO positions that are pending promotion at the end of this month. The test will be at the end of this month. With the anticipated attrition for the department, we're looking to hire nine versus seven so that we can fully staff the department. There will be no financial impact for this, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, R18, on final presentation.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. This is the one we've all been waiting for, the goats.
Goats. Item R19, public hearing and ordinance amending Chapter 4 of Title 11 of the Pueblo Municipal Code with regards to working goats and imposing new requirements in accordance therewith, introduced July 25th, 2022, by Counselor Vicente Martinez Ortega.
May we have a staff report?
Yes, Madam President and City Council, this ordinance requests your approval for amending the city code with the addition of adding working goats and imposing new requirements to address weeds in vacant properties and other landscaping. Attached in the ordinance, there's a significant section to 114-33. It is paragraph D, and it is quite a detailed list, and I'm just going to, to list a few of them in short, shortened sentences here. It provides up to four goats on any premises within the city and vacant premises for up to 60 continuous days. The goats are not to exceed 150 pounds. They are there only to consume the weeds. They must be registered with the Pueblo Animal Shelter. They must be vaccinated and licensed with the city. They must be restricted to the premises. They must be under the direct control of the owner that, who must be in possession of a written agreement to be on the premises. They must be regarded as not pets. They may not be kept in residential areas other than when they are at work. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
I missed-
Anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none on either, do I have a motion to approve? And a second? And any discussion? Oh, discussion, Counselor Martinez?
The goats that were pictured, whose goats are those? Are those the city's?
No, the city does not own goats.
Maybe we should look at it.
Private owner, and I do not know who they are. They are on, they were assigned to that area, which I understand now is all the way down to, almost completed and have to be moved. That area's been cleaned.
Wow. Okay, call for the vote. Passes seven zero. There's no more business. I adjourned this meeting- Passes seven zero. There's no more business. I adjourned this meeting at ten oh five.
No, I am, I am too old.